Good evening. We want to welcome you all to the ITC Town Hall. Thank you for taking time from your busy schedules this evening to join us for some information and conversation about the Inter-Denominational Theological Center and some of the things that are happening right now. So we want to begin with a word of prayer. So I invite you to go into a space that facilitates your ability to experience the presence of God in this moment. Gracious Creator, we acknowledge your presence and we acknowledge that we are here because of the way in which you have moved in our lives collectively and individually. We invoke your spirit and ask that it dwell with us in our conversations, but also in our various ministries. We also humbly ask that your blessings continue on the Inter-Denominational Theological Center and its village. Bless each one that is connected to this mission and this vision to equip men and women for your ministry. May you be glorified in all that we do. May the church be lifted up and strengthened. In your name we pray. Amen. We are glad that each of you have taken a moment to join us. And if you would advance the slide, we'll take a look, quick look at our agenda for the evening and how we will make use of our time. I want to take just a few minutes to offer some introductions. And then particularly of board members who are present as well as staff and ask the president to be prepared to do that. I'll make some brief remarks because we wanted to spend the bulk of our time helping you to get on board of what we call ITC 2.0. President Williams is going to give us an overview of what's been happening, what's been going on behind the scenes. And then, of course, we want to update you on one of the most recent actions of the board and make sure that everyone is clear about what that means and why that happened. And we do hope that by the time this is finished, there'll be ample time for Q and A questions that have been submitted via the email. Many of those questions may get answered during the course of our presentations, but we will also be on the lookout for new questions that may pop up in the chat. And then I believe that if we are blessed to accomplish this, we will have spent our time wisely and spent it well, and we will be well-equipped to move forward from this point. So in case you don't know, I am Bishop Teresa Jefferson Snorton. I thought I was going to be able to do my video, so you could at least see my face for those who don't know me. I am the Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Inter-Denominational Theological Center. I've served as the Chair of the Board since May of 2020. Prior to that, I was Vice Chair, and I've actually been on the Board as Representative of the Phillips School of Theology since 2013. Occupied the seat that was vacated by the late Bishop Thomas Hoyt upon his passing. So I've been journeying with the ITC for a minute. And it's been a blessing in my life to get to intimately know the ITC. Now, I quickly went through the role of who was present, and I think I've captured, I may miss some, but if I miss you, put it in the chat so that I can acknowledge our board members that have joined us. I see Ms. Sheila Baxter, Dr. Will Coleman, Reverend Anita Green, and Dr. Mackie Norris. Are there, if there are other board members present, let us know that by virtue of the chat because we do want you to know who's present. And we are thankful to this great representative, representatives of the Board. Our Vice Chair, Tim Cyrus, is also present. And we thank our board members for their leadership of the ITC and for their faithful stewardship of this great resource that we've been blessed to be responsible for. President Williams, if you would introduce your staff.
Absolutely. So among our staff here is our Vice President of Advancement, Ms. Christina Alexis. And among the, there's a good number of faculty who are here. And I want to call you by name as I see you, of course, Dr. Will Coleman, Dr. Mark Lomax, Dr. Velma Love, Dr. Levanya McIntyre, as well as Dr. Timber Mafico, Staff Person, our Director of Student Success, Natasha Jordan, and Dr. Tamlin Thomas Golden is also with us. I also see our Deans from our constituent denominations, Dr. Amy Davis, Dr. Candace Lewis, Dr. Harold Bennett. So it's good to have you with us as well, as well as a smattering of alumni. I'm glad to see, glad to see you all in the space as well. So God bless you. Glad to be with you.
All right. And again, our gratitude and thanks to each of you who have taken time out to be a part of this experience and this conversation. Just as the Board Chair, just let me say that the last several years have been what I would describe as represented in that paradoxical nature of crisis and opportunity, particularly as the pandemic emerged and we began to see the real and long-lasting impact of what it meant to function in the midst of a pandemic, a national pandemic. We have done well. And I want everyone to know that, that in spite of all of the challenges, in spite of all of the crises, both crises with a big C and crises with a small c, the ITC has done well. We have survived, we are thriving, and we are really looking forward to the ways in which we will expand this vision and continue to impact the world. The ITC is known the world over. I'm blessed to be the Ecumenical Officer in my denomination and get to travel to lots of places and not just in this country, but worldwide. People know of the Inter-Denominational Theological Center and are impressed not only with our legacy, but impressed with the way in which we continue to interface and equip ministers for the future. The Board has been busy around 2020 when we completed the Task Force Assessment of the ITC. The Board adopted a concept called ITC 2.0, which is kind of a play on language as we know in technology, they're always upgrading. And we adopted this as a board because we see that the times call on us to do a refresh, to do an update, to update our method of delivery, to update how we engage students in their educational pursuits and how we equip ministers for the future. So tonight you're going to hear what we envision as the Board as what ITC 2.0 is, what it means, and where we will be going from here. Along the way, that means the Board has had to make some critical decisions. We changed our governance structure as one of those things. You'll hear more about that so that we would be a bit more efficient and effective. And the Board also started meeting more frequently. The Board had been meeting just twice a year, and we have had meetings three times a year plus a retreat the last couple of years because we are serious about this work and know that it requires our investment of time and energy and our focus and attention. So I do want you to know on behalf of the Board that we are serious about what we're doing. We don't take this lightly as a task. And we are so glad that so many of you have joined tonight because it lets us know that there are others who are as invested in the ITC as the Board of Trustees. So again, thank you. And I look forward to having a little more conversation with you later on in the agenda. But at this point, let's just move to the President who's going to give us ITC 2.0 at a glance.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Bishop Jefferson Snorton, our Chair, our fearless leader for your leadership and your commitment to the ITC. Again, I want to echo that sentiment of gratitude for each of you who've shown up this evening to learn more about where we are and where we're going and also to address the most recent development in the Board's decisions regarding Morehouse School of Religion. Again, this expression of care, concern, interest and engagement is exactly what's needed at this moment for the next iteration and the next most faithful step in our development as an institution. So let me, I want to kind of give you again a glance at where we've been, how we got here, and where we're going, what we call ITC 2.0. And we want to start with some context. This is an image that for me describes the landscape of theological education at this point. The ground has shifted. And many of the things that we've taken for granted, many of the pathways that we have understood as the way to go from one place to another, the vehicles, to use a metaphor and to make that metaphor stretch that we've seen, that we've used historically to take us from one place to another. In this field of theological education, we're in a period of destabilization across the Board. And that goes for the whole field of 270-plus theological schools that are accredited by the ATS. And so there's a great deal of upheaval, which Bishop Jefferson Snorton mentioned creates both opportunity and crisis and gives us an opportunity to really think about if all bets are off and if there's an open field for creativity to create a new, what may be possible, then it gives us some opportunities to kind of dig into our own imagination around what may be necessary to cultivate the kinds of leaders that our communities and our churches need now. So Bishop Jefferson Snorton mentioned a task force that our Board at the time, back in 2018, 2019, looking at this landscape, looking at what at the time was a spin cycle of crisis that ITC had been in, the Board authorized a task force to take a look at the condition of the institution in light of the field and the changing landscape of theological education, and then begin to project a future for the institution that would be the most promising and viable. And what that task force said at the time was that our task was not to save the ITC as we know it. Because what we came to recognize quickly was that the ITC as we knew it was designed for a time that had long since passed. But what we understood was that the mission and vision of ITC has never been more urgent and necessary. However, if the mission and vision of ITC are going to have a future, what the task force said to the Board at that time was it will require a top-to-bottom overhaul of the institution, no stone left unturned. And to the Board's credit at the time, the Board, rather than close up shop or call it quits, said, "We are up for the work of transformation." And that's the work that we've been in since 2019. And so what's important to say is that this is a Sankofa moment. Right? That in 1960, when the ground was broken right here at Beckwith Street, that this model that we call ITC was in many ways an innovation. It was an idea ahead of its time. However, it was an idea and an institution that was not set up and structured for sustainability. So now, as we're in a new moment where many of those kind of design issues are being raised to the fore, it's time for us to get about the business of going back and fetching that which is the best of our legacies to move it forward in a new form that we call ITC 2.0. And that really means that we are operating at the intersection of innovations that are taking place at the institutional level, at the educational level, and at the operational level. Again, no stone left unturned. It is a comprehensive redesign of the institution, which, as you know, does not happen overnight, but has been steadily underway since we set our hands to this plow in 2019. So I just want to highlight a few key developments that have taken place since 2019. So Bishop Jefferson Snorton mentioned that in 2019, we seated a new, in 2020, rather, we seated a new Board that was triggered by the revision and updating of the ITC's bylaws, which reduced the size of the Board, which at the time was a maximum of 44, and changed the composition of the Board to increase Board effectiveness and improve towards standards of good governance. We've also been in the process of getting the right people in the right seats as far as administration and staff. And I'm grateful that we've been able to hire and bring on board folks who could be anywhere professionally, but have really latched onto this vision and are here to make this thing happen. We've also seen over the last few years enhanced fundraising and development efforts. So an average of over 20% over-year improvement in fiscal year 21, 2021 and '22. And we've secured over the last couple of years the largest historic unrestricted and individual donor gifts in the history of the institution, including over $1 million in new scholarships and related funding just this year. And as the fiscal year of '22 closed, we reached a 10-year peak in our private gifts and grants. Unfortunately, many of those gifts and grants are restricted for programming, some for core operations. And so we are still working, and you'll hear more about this in a moment, to secure the kind of unrestricted funding that allows us to invest even further into the transformation of this institution. What's also important is that that first year, 2019 to 2020, we began to interrupt a year-over-year trend. In fact, going into fiscal year 1920, we had a trend of deficits year-over-year. We were able to interrupt that in fiscal year '20 and begin to trend from that point of interrupting consecutive years of operating deficits towards operating surpluses. We're in the process of redesigning our educational model, both in terms of delivery so that it's more accessible and a hybrid delivery model, but also shifting to focus our educational aim in a way that, again, brings the best of what ITC's always done in cultivating prophetic problem solvers who are not just those who beat back against the status quo, but know how to begin to design and build solutions with communities to impact the flesh and blood issues that our communities face. And all of that being captured in an impact-focused assessment that allows us to measure what matters and then manage what we measure. We've had faculty transitions, some near and dear faculty to us who've retired, as well as seven new faculty since 2019. And with accreditation, in March this year, we were proud to receive a 10-year reaffirmation of our accreditation from our primary accreditor, the Association of Theological Schools. And we received praise from that onsite committee, which is not a usual thing. In our exit interview with our onsite committee, they said to us, "You have a lot to be proud of at ITC because you've done so much in a short period of time, and what we hope you're doing is writing this down." Because what they said is that the whole field has something to learn from what ITC is doing. And SACC COC, which is our other accreditor, we actually had our best showing there, even though we've been placed on warning. That warning was a warning for four standards that we whittled down from 37 non-compliant standards to four, most of which focus on financial inherited challenges, some of which we'll talk about here in a moment. And so overall, this move from ITC 1.0 to 2.0, it is a changing business and institutional model that begins to move us from a tuition and debt-dependent model to a model that's driven by social impact, which allows us to do well and do good at the same time, generating revenue and also generating the kind of impact that this institution has always made in the community. It also involves the revision of the so-called consortium model that, under which we've been structured for some time, to make it again more sustainable and more efficient. Now, we've made a lot of progress, but we've got light years to go, many miles to go before we sleep. We are still reckoning and wrestling with inherited challenges from past decisions of past Boards that have eroded the endowment over time, burdened or saddled us with debt that we have to cure. COVID put front and center the fact every business is a technology business. And ITC needs to strengthen this technology backbone to compete and to effectively operate in this market. And so that's a challenge that we're working on. Also, significant deferred maintenance on campus. Many of you can empathize with that. But we've got some old buildings on campus that have been long since, I would say, neglected and not adequately maintained, as well as, again, this tuition-dependent business model and this institutional model, which, again, was not structured for sustainability and has chronically underfunded the institution, which we as a staff working with the Board and our partners are working to think through how that model needs to change. So let's talk about where we're going from here with those gifts and those challenges in tow. This year, actually, in fall of '21, ITC was awarded $1 million from the Lilly Endowment to catalyze what we call ITC 2.0 in its Pathways Grant, which for us was Pathways for Prophetic Problem Solvers, which is really geared at the work that institutions are doing, really, again, across the field of changing their business model and educational model in a conjoined way to ensure our effectiveness and our sustainability over time, which for us is not just a matter of curriculum or redesigning classes, but it's about the whole system under which ITC operates. And so this is a kind of what we call a GPS. It's a roadmap, but a different kind of a roadmap. It's a 10-point kind of plan that serves as coordinates around which we measure our progress toward this vision. And I don't want to go down a rabbit hole on each one of these, but just to highlight a few of these pieces that indicate the kind of problems that we're trying to solve and the way in which we're trying to restructure the way we do theological education, which, again, I think is instructive for the whole field. And so knowing that many of our students enter into ministry, but ministry is not often a viable, doesn't often, doesn't always provide a viable livelihood. We want to do theological education in a way that helps folks learn how to make a difference and make a living. Right? That while many of our graduates are multi-vocational, how do you do multi-vocationality in a way that still allows you to make impact, but also allows you to make a living in the things that you care about, but in the areas that most impact the lives, the flesh and blood issues of our people? In terms of preparing prophetic problem solvers, this is work that we are doing in partnership with other institutions who are creating immersive, in-context opportunities for folks to learn the kinds of things that folks encounter in ministry but didn't learn in seminary, community and economic development, food systems and security, climate change and environmental justice, those kinds of flesh and blood issues. We want to build the kinds of leaders who understand not just how to protest against the status quo, but to build the kinds of solutions that our folks need. And so preparing prophetic problem solvers for advocacy and innovation is that second pillar, both of those having to do with the redesign of the educational model. I'll say something in a minute about the fact that what's also tied to our future is ITC's redevelopment of its campus, our redevelopment of our assessment model, a hybrid delivery model, the ways in which we're partnering with international partners to provide opportunities both for our students, but also for students abroad and faculty abroad in exchange. And then finally, these last three have to do with the infrastructure, making education affordable to relieve student debt, creating structures for financial sustainability, again, addressing some of these outstanding issues that we've inherited, as well as building the kind of infrastructure systemically in the organization that enables us to learn and grow and to be a place where staff people want to and feel good about the work that they're doing. And so the campus redevelopment, this is one kind of rendering of, just to really spark our imagination around what the campus may look like in a live, work, play, pray, learn environment that helps to generate the kind of revenue that sustains the institution in its financial footprint, but also in terms of its social impact. On top of that social impact campus footprint, there's also a social impact-focused impact program portfolio. ITC has always done community-focused programs, and this brings forth that work really sitting on the platform of that campus footprint that addresses key issues around housing and community development, food systems and security, sustainable development, renewable energy, and mental health and community care. And all of that informs a new educational model that prepares prophetic problem solvers in degreed and non-degreed programs. So in a real sense, it's an integrated impact and revenue model. And so what now, as we come to a close? And I'm going to pivot in a moment back to our Chair. How do we get from here to there? Right? How do we get from ITC 1.0 to ITC 2.0? Well, we're in the process of pivoting from this period of discovery and discernment that we've been in for the last three years, pivoting to a period of design and development. And what that requires is investment in the future. No longer simply trying to maintain what we've done, but we want to honor that, but recognize that what we've done sets us up for where we're going, and it's time to invest in that. And so our goal for this coming fiscal year is $12 million raised, a third of which, I'm sorry, a quarter of which we're working to raise over the next month, over the next 30 days. And so we want to invite you into that. On August 25th of this month, we'll be hosting a red carpet event that's a fundraiser, and we're so grateful for the kinds of partners who've come alongside, excited about this work, excited about this vision, and recognizing how necessary the institution is when it flourishes and rises to meet the needs of the community that is really calling for ITC to be the best expression of itself. So we want you to pray above all to believe in where the ITC is and where it's going, to get engaged and to get invested with your time, your energy, and your dollars to support the future of where God is calling us together. So having said that, I want to now pivot and and give the floor back to our Chair because our move toward this future requires us to make some hard decisions in addressing longstanding issues that really kind of represent, you know, where we've been and how we need to change business as usual to move forward in a promising way. And so to address the issue of Morehouse School of Religion and the recent Board decision, I want to pitch back to our Board Chair to provide more insight on that.
Thank you, President Williams. Before we do that, we did invite people to submit questions ahead of time. However, you may have heard something about ITC 2.0 that comes to you tonight as new information or has generated a question. The chat is open and it is available for you to put any questions there. And hopefully, we will have ample time at the end to not only respond to the previously submitted questions, but to any new questions that may have come up. So if you have any questions about ITC 2.0 and what that means, please go ahead and use the chat, and we will be happy to share whatever information is available. As President Williams indicated, anytime you move into a period of transformation, there are very difficult decisions that have to be made. And I want to commend the Board of Trustees because they have been making these very difficult decisions ever since this particular Board of Trustees was seated in May of 2020. Reminder, that was in the midst of a pandemic. And just as an aside, this is a Board who has never had an in-person meeting. All of our meetings in 2020, 2021, and 2022 have been virtual, but this is a hard-working Board who is committed to doing its very best for the mission and vision of the ITC. So many of you heard about this Town Hall because you also heard just a few days ago. So many of you heard about this town hall because you also heard just a few days ago. That the board made the decision. To end the membership of the Morehouse School of Religion in the Interdenominational Theological Center. I want everyone to be assured that this was not a hasty decision. It was a decision that has been. On our radar for a long time. And even a decision over the course of the summer, as we ended our fiscal year last year. That we delayed even until the month of August because it was such a difficult decision to make. To help everybody understand where we are, let me just kind of give you a chronology. Last Tuesday, when the board voted, we did vote to remove. Morehouse School of Religion from membership in the I T C. And we made that effective immediately. The board felt that it was critical that this decision be made prior to. The beginning of the next academic school year. At the close, what what helped? What what helped us understand the need to make this decision? Was that at the close of the fiscal year on June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. The Morehouse School of Religion is in severe arrears for unpaid affiliation fees. And that arrears totals over six hundred thousand dollars. Now, the annual affiliation fee is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you can do some fairly quick math and see that that six hundred thousand arrears. Is an arrears that has accumulated over multiple years. And part of our decision was informed because to date, although we have asked. I T C, the trustees have not received from Morehouse School of Religion any plan. To address these unmet obligations to the I T C. This puts the the. The Interdenomination Theological Center in a very difficult position as we try to plan for the future. We recognize that Morehouse School of Religion since nineteen fifty eight, when the very idea of I T C was born. That Morehouse has been a foundational pillar, both within the community and within the consortium. But we felt that we had to make this decision because we had made numerous notifications and had multiple agreements. Over this over several years, multiple years. That were intended to encourage Morehouse School of Religion to address this unpaid arrears of affiliation fees. Here's a brief synopsis of the history of this longstanding issue. Because we do want everybody to fully understand this was not a precipitous decision. And it was not a decision that was made without making efforts to find a remedy. If we go to the next slide, please.
That's it.
Okay. In twenty eighteen, Morehouse had an outstanding balance at that time. Of three hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars. These were unpaid fees from prior years. So you can see this arrears has been accumulating for a long time. But in twenty eighteen, which you you can recall, that's the date. That's the time period when we empanel the task force and made the decision to move towards I T C two point O. Morehouse School of Religion, with the Executive Committee of the I T C Board of Trustees. Entered a written covenant agreement. And in that written covenant agreement, Morehouse School of Religion. Agreed to repay the outstanding balance at that time. At to the tune of five thousand dollars a month. Until the debt was paid. And this was. On condition that they would stay current with their future affiliation fees. That agreement that was crafted by the Morehouse School of Religion. Also included a self imposed provision. It was not something that we asked for, but they put it in the covenant agreement. That if they fail to adhere to the terms of this agreement. That they would voluntarily remove themselves from membership in the I T C. Four years later, from the execution of that agreement with Morehouse School of Religion. The. Payment plan has not been complied with, nor has the promise of self removal. So what's happened in the meantime? Next slide, please. In twenty twenty. Morehouse did make some incremental payments. But at the end of that fiscal year, the arrears was still three hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars in unpaid fees. At the beginning of the new fiscal year, which began in July. A letter was sent to Morehouse School of Religion. Informing them of the outstanding balance. This letter was prepared by our external auditor. It was addressed to the Morehouse School of Religion Dean. And in October of twenty twenty, it was acknowledged. In writing by the Morehouse School of Religion Board Chair. So I think it's really important that everybody understand. This has not been information that has not been made available to the Morehouse School of Religion in detail. Next slide. In March of twenty twenty two, we're now. Two years after the last notification, after that prior notification. A letter was sent to Morehouse School of Religion noting that the affiliation fees were. Had grown now to just under five hundred thousand dollars. In April of this year, in the board meeting. Our Fiscal Affairs Committee. Brought it before the board as an issue that had to be resolved. Before the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And that having to be resolved was because of the impact of this arrears. On Morehouse on I T C's audit. And of course, as the president noted. In our reaccreditation with the I T with the SAC C O C. This issue of fiscal stability. Was one of the factors that led us to be on warning. I T C board was notified that we were going to have to make a decision. Because we could not continue to carry these outstanding receivables. In such a huge amount on our books. Let me add parenthetically, during this period of time, no payments were made on affiliation fees. Next slide. On April thirteenth, this was shortly after the board. The trustee board meeting, I T C trustee board meeting. The Morehouse School of Religion Board Chair requested a meeting. And that meeting was convened on May third. The intent of the meeting was to address this issue of unpaid fees. Because Morehouse was informed that the board was going to have to make a decision. If these arrears were not handled by June thirtieth. The meeting included the Morehouse. School of Religion Board Chair, their vice chair, the dean, and their accountant. And from the I T C's perspective. We understood the question or the purpose of the meeting was to outline. What Morehouse School of Religion was going to do. To remedy this arrears and to see how the I T C might assist in the process. Unfortunately. In that meeting. That there was no outline presented about what was going to be done to remedy the balance. Most of the conversation focused around previous things that had or had not happened. In terms of mailings to alumni and so forth. But there was no. Plan presented that could be presented to the executive committee or the board of I T C. To help us see how this arrears is going to be handled. Uh, Morehouse was asked if they had documentation. Of an alternative accounting of their debt. Because there was also discussion at that point about the actual amount owed. There was the perception on the Morehouse School of Religion's part that some donations. That had been made were to be made towards the arrears, but they had not been booked that way. From their perspective. The accountant could not give us any accounting. Of how much those contributions were, when they were made. And how we might move them from being credited. To general giving to be credited to Morehouse's arrears. So since that meeting, we still have not received any documentation. Of alternative accounting. We've not received a request for another meeting, nor any other communication from the Morehouse Board of Trustees. Regarding this outstanding debt. There have been informal conversations. I was a part of an informal conversation with a former trustee. But nothing official has come to let the I T C board know that there was a plan being put in place. That we could rely on and include in the notes in our audit. As our efforts to remedy this outstanding receivable. Next slide. So what had to happen? In our audit for fiscal year ending June thirtieth. We had to write off these unpaid fees as bad debt. That negatively impacted our twenty twenty one. And twenty twenty two fiscal year audits. And the I T C board is and does bear responsibility. For the fiscal accountability and the fiduciary stability of the I T C. So considering this accumulated debt. That was not just one year, but multiple years. And considering the lack of adherence to a covenant that was entered into in good faith in twenty eighteen. In view of a viable plan to address these issues. And the negative impact that this arrears had on our financial status. The I T C Board of Trustees reasonably concluded. That it was time for us to go ahead and bite the bullet. Make a very hard decision because Morehouse is a part of our family. And those of you who have family know how difficult it is when you have to take action against family. But we did this in the name of the Interdenomination Theological Center. Whose vision and mission we as trustees have vowed to protect and support. I hope this helps everyone who's listening have a clear understanding. Of how the I T C board proceeded in its action. To remove Morehouse School of Religion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know there are many questions that. May come up as a result of that that chronology. Well, I want to address some of those questions. That have been submitted ahead of time with regard to what does this mean for students? So what's important to note is that Baptist students. Will still be able to matriculate and finish their degrees at the I T C. As as many of you know, there is one faculty at I T C. That educates all of our students and will continue to educate all of our students. So Baptist students do not need to go anywhere. They will finish their degrees at I T C. This does not expel Baptist students from the I T C. You will continue to be I T stu I T C students served and cared for by the faculty. The administration and the community. Another question that was raised that we want to address here is that many of our students who were affiliated with Morehouse School of Religion. Upon their admission to the I T C. I want to know how their diplomas will look when they when they cross the stage. And so we want to assure students who were affiliated with Morehouse School of Religion upon their admission to the I T C. Through the academic year that just ended in June thirty. That they will have their diplomas reflect that affiliation. So we'll we'll honor that. And we we want to we want our Baptist students to know that. We will continue to create opportunities for community building, for for leadership. And ministry opportunities. And for receiving support for your studies through the establishment of a Baptist student fellowships. About the student fellowship. Now, this doesn't constitute another constituent seminary. It is a fellowship for Baptist students. However, we've been we've been grateful for the outreach from many Baptist clergy and leaders. And in the Atlanta area and beyond, who said, we want to find ways to continue to support Baptist students. And to wrap our arms around the students who remain at the I T C. And so we'll establish that Baptist student fellowship for our Baptist students. Also utilizing the local and regional support from Baptist clergy congregations and leaders. And and make sure that our students continue to be cared for. So. That that answers that question around whether students have to go anywhere, students will continue to be served. You absolutely will. And you will remain I T C students. Even though this unfortunate decision had to be made with regard to. With regard to the organization that is Morehouse School of Religion. So I want to express gratitude. To the alumni and the allies who've expressed that desire to continue to support I T C. And the students that we educate, Baptist and otherwise. And to assure you that you will continue to be a part of the I T C village and community. So that that goes to a question that Dean Lewis has raised about. Increasing enrollment to offset the loss of Morehouse students. Morehouse, the 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 loss of Baptist students is not a foregone conclusion. I have heard from students who say, I still want to be at at I T C and you still are welcome at I T C. In your full Baptist identity. And so there's not a foregone conclusion. That we would expect the loss of enrollment of of students who were affiliated with Morehouse. And who are Baptist in our identity. And and that arrears, what was important to say is that each of our constituent partners, Gammon. Gammon, Mason, Phillips, and. And and Turner also submit affiliation fees. To support the operations of the I T C. That that makes it possible for us to educate. The the students that come through those channels, right? That that's over and above. The the tuition revenue that unfortunately, most of our students derive from student loans. And so it it costs money to educate students. And we have partners to participate. And in supporting the I T C, a portion of our budget to educate those students. And in the arrears has to do with the agreement, the longstanding agreement that we've had with Morehouse School of Religion to. To 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 provide its portion of the support that's needed for 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 students.
There was a question about. The standing Baptist Fellowship student leaders.
Yeah, so the Baptist student or student fellowships generally, whether it's the Richardson Fellowship and now the Baptist Student Fellowship. These are student led organizations, but they are supported by the institution. And so we would expect that the student leaders who have emerged over the last year. Among Baptist students will continue. In in their leadership roles in the in the in the cycle of of leadership selection that takes place. But we will continue to try to put additional supports around those students in in light of recent developments.
We received several questions via email and several have been placed in the chat. Can we get some assistance in going through those questions?
Sure. So. There's a question that was raised with regard to faculty concerns and academic deans and Dr. Lomax will address that. In the upcoming faculty workshop to provide some clarity there. Kamari, thank you for your. For your advocacy. And starting a mass fundraising effort to get back into I T C. I I would I would encourage you to. Convene and confer with your colleagues as well as with with the leadership to see what you can do. But also to 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 continue to find ways to support the students that have remained, as we will with you.
I did see that that question related to faculty ask. And what is the board doing about that? We're definitely, as as a board of trustees, pay very close attention. That we don't compromise our mission, that we're able to do what we say we're going to do. And we have the adequate faculty. and we have the adequate faculty. So what you will probably be seeing over the next several months is decisions that get made in real time. Uh, this really is an endeavor that's, that's organic and live and living. And so as students appear and their needs are made known to us, we must, um, you know, make the appropriate decisions. So, the president has presented to us the plan for instruction for the fall that's based on the needs of our current students. And the board's mandate to the president and his staff is that there's, we do not wanna have any barriers created for any student to not be able to graduate. So that means there have been some electives eliminated for this current semester because our focus is making sure people are able to complete their program and not be delayed because of the inav- unavailability of core classes that are required for graduation. So the response to that question is, uh, we're looking at this in real time. That's one of the reasons why the board is meeting more frequently. Uh, in addition to the board meetings, the Executive Committee is meeting on a regular basis so that we can, um, really pay close attention and service our students. After all, that is our core mission and our core, uh, core, core purpose, and that will always be number one. And the first question that we, as the Board of Trustees, ask, uh, about any changes that are anticipated. I saw another question in the chat about, uh, Morehouse School of Religion Founder's Day. What will happen?
Well, I, that, that M S R Founder's Day, that's a question that, um, members of the Morehouse School of Religion Board uh, and the dean will have to answer. Um, that's, that's something that would, uh, not likely happen, um, at the I T C or on the I T C campus. However, a- unless there is, um, some change. But, um, I wanna speak to a broader issue that, um, that is kind of a repetitive, kind of a repetitive question that we've received, which is, is there a path to return? Um, and what, what's important to note is that that is a separate conversation from the conversation of removal, that the removal was a, um, a, a decision that was made that, that, um, really kind of put a line in the sand and said, "We cannot go further with this pattern." And we have to, 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 to cut this pattern from continuing. Uh, otherwise, we would continue to have to write off bad debt, uh, with a lack of accountability. And so now, um, any plan for return, I, I can't, I don't, um, propose to speak on behalf of the board. What I can say at the very least, um, is that there is, there's no way for the board to have to be able to respond to a plan that we have, that the board has not received. Um, and so, uh, any, any path, uh, would have to be preceded by a plan to, at the very least, uh, a, address that outstanding arrears.
And, uh, let me also just kinda add to that, that, you know, the board, I think, um, will always have a position of openness to those who want to be a part of the mission and vision of the school. But we have to make sound fiscal decisions, and it's, it's really our responsibility as the board to do that. And, um, if a plan is presented, um, a meeting has been requested, and we're in the process of seeing how we can accommodate that. Um, we're certainly not gonna close the door. But ultimately, at the end of the day, any decision would have to guarantee that this would not happen again. We cannot bear the risk of repeating the same mistake over again. Most of you are aware that this is not the first time that we've had this kind of issue. Oh, and, uh, it has not been mentioned, but one of the compromising, someone did raise the question about what were the, uh, issues with S A Cs? All of the issues with S A Cs that led to warning had to do with financial stability. And one of the reasons why we can't quite demonstrate financial stability is because our endowment was encumbered around all the activity to try to save Bennett Hall. I T C and its endowment took the hit on that in terms of encumbering our endowment. So, we have to be very, very careful as a board that we don't make decisions simply because a crisis presents itself. But we have to think beyond the moment and make a decision that assures or at least lays the foundation that builds up the I T C and does not encumber us in the future.
There's a question that asks, uh, are students involved in any decision-making? Um, and that is, that's the purpose of having student representatives on the board. Um, so we do have a student, uh, representative to the Board of Trustees who was present, uh, and participated in the conversations and ultimately the decision, um, that led to this. So that is, um, so students are, um, are, are involved in that, in, in the conversation and in decision-making in that way.
Someone did ask the question, um, that, that's, that, why were Morehouse School of Religion students blindsided? And, and I want to say that I think that's unfortunate that you were blindsided because there are two representatives, or there had been two representatives from the Morehouse School of Religion on the I T C Board. And, uh, our understanding as trustees is that when we represent one of the constituent seminaries, it's our responsibility to go back to the seminary and let them know what's happening on the I T C side. Uh, the I T C itself does not try to convey, uh, information to the individual seminary uh, students. We rely on the individual boards to do that. So, uh, I did see someone make a suggestion that, uh, Morehouse School of Religion, uh, family, the board, the students, alums, et cetera, may wanna do a gathering. That's cer- that certainly is something that probably has a lot of merit at this point. But that's something that would have to be done by Morehouse School of Religion individuals and not by the I T C. We're committed, uh, President Williams and I and our Board of Trustees to have other forums like this as, as we see necessary, uh, or appropriate so that, um, in, in the big picture, you will know what's going on. Someone raised a question about the rendering and, and everything. One of the things that I hope we all can do is refrain from reacting to things that are ideas. Uh, because when we react to ideas, then we shut down the possibility of conversation and, and our creative and prophetic imagination. Uh, but this board, at least as, as long as I have anything to do with the board, will communicate when decisions have been made. And we have, in our board meetings, uh, seen a variety of possibilities and a variety in, in talking about the consortium agreement. We've looked at a variety of models and had multiple meetings and multiple discussions. And it does distress me at times when people react as if a decision has been made when we're simply putting ideas out there. So I hope as a community as well, as we launch I T C two point oh, we can avail ourselves to participate when there are discussions and, uh, ideas being presented so that when decisions are made, you won't be blindsided. You will know and you will have heard what, what's being talked about and what's being, uh, considered. Why didn't the deal happen between Morehouse School of Religion, American Baptist, and the I T C? That's probably a question best directed to, uh, the Morehouse School of Religion individuals. Uh, as a board, we did approve that. Uh, we crafted a M O U. Uh, we had our attorney ready to execute an agreement. Uh, we had a deadline set, uh, for that to be done. Uh, something was happening behind the scenes at Abscot that we were not privy to. Uh, so we extended the deadline, uh, at least two times, two additional times. And then we were abruptly informed that it was not gonna happen, and we were not given a reason. So that question would have to go to Abscot's individuals and the, um, Morehouse School of Religion. From the Board of Trustees, we saw that as a very viable and exciting possibility and were open to it and had voted to approve it.
That's right.
Mr. President, I don't see any more questions in, new questions in the chat.
Yeah, I think, I think we've exhausted the, uh, the new questions in the chat, and we've addressed uh, most of the, uh, the questions that were pre-submitted. Um, so, um, I'll, I'll give you the final word, but I wanna say, uh, again, a big word of gratitude to, um, to those of you who, who showed up to understand a little better uh, what's taking place, both in terms of where we are, where we're going, uh, and the specifics of this decision uh, that, that were, that was made. We, uh, we came here with the intention of being, um, as transparent as possible uh, and to let you all know, um, what's going on with our beloved I T C. Uh, and, but also to solicit your support, uh, in the future of the I T C, which, um, is, is a necessary institution. Uh, has changed my life and, and the, the lives of many others. Uh, and the best is indeed yet to come. Thank you, Kamari, uh, for the I T C. But that happens as a result of the village pitching in and, and making sure, uh, that, that many hands make light work. So thank you so much, uh, for your presence and for your engagement. We look forward to more with you going forward. Bishop?
I certainly wanna echo those words of appreciation and thanks. Uh, really appreciated everyone's questions. I hope you feel now better informed. Uh, we are, uh, having conversation around ways to continue to enhance our communication strategy. Uh, so be on the lookout, uh, on the website, in our social media for announcements that will come about other conversations, other considerations. Uh, to those of you who are students, you do have a student representative on the board. President Williams, can you say his name?
Alajuan or, or, uh, or Yal, or Yale?
Right. So to those of you who are students, ask him, uh, what, what happened at the board meeting. Our next board meeting is in October. And for those of you who are part of, uh, the constituent seminaries, each seminary has two representatives on the board. If you don't know who they are, uh, the president's office or the staff can help you know who those individuals are so that we can all stay informed and get out of, um, a, a reactionary mode so that we can be proactive to bring forth this new thing that I believe God has in store for the I T C. I am not an I T C graduate. I had my application in at Philip School of Theology and a P W I, uh, seduced me away with promises of full scholarships so that I wouldn't have student debt. And so I took that route. So for me, it's been a really humbling, uh, experience to be invited to be on the I T C Board and, and honored to serve as the chair for an institution that I have come to love dearly with all my heart. And although I did not attend, uh, the I T C, I've had several of my pastors come to I T C. When I have, uh, people that I engage with who are interested in the seminary, the I T C is where I direct them. I am married to, uh, a graduate of the Philip School of Theology at the I T C. I believe in what the I T C is doing. I know it is necessary. It is critical that the Afrocentric perspective of who God is and how God moves and works in our lives and how the church can be God's presence in the world. I know how important that is in times like these. So, I, all of my powers, uh, will be engaged to help make this thirty-day campaign a success as well as the long-term campaigns of the I T C and this great vision and great plan that we have so that when my grandson or his children have their call to ministry, they will know, "I'm going to the I T C." God bless each one of you, and thank you so much for your time and attention.
God bless you.